Mr. Chairman, this is recorded at that session. I would like to have you face your attorney, Senator Janet Harker.
I would like to welcome everyone to our County's, Chester County Commission Meeting, Special Call Session, this Monday, June the twenty-fourth, 2021. I'd like to welcome everyone and also remind that this is a special call meeting. And at this time, with, I'd like to ask for prayer. And I'd like to ask Commissioner, Mr. Jerry Emerson, to lead us in prayer. And thanks to Commissioner Mike Alexander, to lead us in the pledge.
Oh, great, Mr. Chairman, Father Lord, we thank you for another beautiful day you give us. We thank you, Lord, for this time we have shared with one another. And just, oh, we ask you, Lord, to be with our people all over this county. Be with us, Lord, in everything you do. Be with us, Lord, and with this great glory to you and your Father, you receive the blessing. Bless us all, Lord, and we love you. Pray for those who are sick, come to the hospital. Pray, Lord, that we be with us all tonight, especially for these three men, yes, thank you, Jesus, I worship him. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the world, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, next on the agenda, we'd like to have a roll call.
Johnny Garner, here. Jerry Low, here. Larry Blackstock, here. Al McKinnon, here. Andrea Hollis, here. Jackie Butler, here. Anne Moore, here. Carolyn Higgins, here. Russell Flay, here. Jerry Emerson, here. Sandra Hyers, here. Joseph Valero, here. Barry Smith, here. Tim Pro, here. Diane Jordan, here. Mike Alexander, here. Todd Lewis, here. Seventeen, right.
Next, we'd like to approve the minutes from May seventeen, 2021, for the County Commission.
Mr. Chairman, yes, sir. I approve that.
I say, we have Commissioner John Garner to make a motion to approve the minutes. And Commissioner, Mr. Clayton, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next on the agenda, we have the approval of budget amendments for all funds. I'd like to, uh, okay. We have the, uh, school. We'll start with the, uh, amendments for the budget lines for the school. You got that there?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer to approve that.
That's such an easy one.
You suggested we vote on the amendments, so this will be in the school first. We have a motion to approve the budget amendments for schools. Uh, Mr. Jerry Emerson, we have a second by Commissioner, Mr. Andrea Hollis. Is there any discussion about these amendments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we have the amendments for the county, uh, County General. We have a motion to approve, uh, Larry Blackstock, I'm sorry, and second by Ms. Carolyn Higgins. Any discussion on the budget amendments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The budget amendments should be next.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the budget amendments. Second. We also have a second by Commissioner, Commissioner Mike Alexander. Any discussion on the budget amendments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And if the solid waste of the amendments?
We have a motion by Ms. Carolyn Higgins on the solid waste amendments.
I'll second it.
We have a second by Mr. Larry Blackstock. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Commissioner Jerry King, do you have any amendments? Fire Department, do they have any other amendments? All right, next on the, uh, agenda, we have a resolution for the chair of contributions for 2021 and 2022. We'd like to...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Could we have, so Ms. Rose talked me through it, and what did I talk? And then that wasn't our title.
Yes. It was, it was... The, uh, chair of contributions are, the first is the best use squad, which is in an amount of twenty-five hundred. Next is Jacoa, an amount of two thousand. Next is a spell recovery, an amount of one thousand. Next is the Char- Carl Perkins Child Abuse Center, for two thousand. Next is Queenville Cancer Center, for ten thousand. Next is the Senior Citizens Center, for seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. Next is Dixie Utes, for ten thousand. Next is Chamber of Commerce, for twenty-five thousand. The American Youth, the Suffer, five thousand. The Southwest Tennessee Tourism, seven hundred and fifty dollars. The West Tennessee River Basin, seven thousand nine hundred dollars. American Red Cross, two thousand five hundred dollars. The RIG program, ten thousand dollars. The Star Center, fifteen hundred dollars. West Tennessee Hearing and Speech, two thousand dollars. And RAOF, five thousand dollars.
I come that's the youth football lab.
It has been out and we're going, it will be back on the agenda for June.
Okay, Dixie Utes, get their business out of the office.
Yes.
And you've created some of those, like RAOF and Jacoa, so those are generally fine.
Those are the ones that...
Not actually Jim O'Pumm, and he's washing and washing out.
But, we have, we had to contribute, or we had to stay.
I'd like to propose to approve those.
We have a motion to approve the chair of contributions?
I'll second it.
We have a second, Commissioner, Commissioner Jacob Butler. Any more discussion on the chair of contributions? We'd like to have a roll call.
Johnny Garner?
Yes.
Jerry Low?
Yes.
Larry Blackstock?
Yes.
Al McKinnon?
Yes.
Andrea Hollis?
Yes.
Jackie Butler?
Yes.
Anne Moore?
Yes.
Carolyn Higgins?
Yes.
Russell Flay?
Yes.
Jerry Emerson?
Yes.
Sandra Hyers?
Yes.
Joseph Valero?
Yes.
Barry Smith?
Yes.
Tim Pro?
Yes.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Mike Alexander?
Yes.
Todd Lewis?
Yes.
Seventeen, right.
Next, gentlemen and gentlemen, we have the resolution for fixing the tax rate for Chester County, 2021 and 2022, at two point four eight six one.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go for that.
I'll second Andrea Hollis.
We have a motion to approve it, by Commissioner Larry Blackstock, and a second by Commissioner Andrea Hollis. Is there any discussion of the tax rate?
That is, that is the same as last year, correct?
Yes, yes, they're the same as the last two years.
Johnny Garner?
Yes.
Jerry Low?
Yes.
Larry Blackstock?
Yes.
Al McKinnon?
Yes.
Andrea Hollis?
Yes.
Jackie Butler?
Yes.
Anne Moore?
Yes.
Carolyn Higgins?
Yes.
Russell Flay?
Yes.
Jerry Emerson?
Yes.
Sandra Hyers?
Yes.
Joseph Valero?
Yes.
Barry Smith?
Yes.
Tim Pro?
Yes.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Mike Alexander?
Yes.
Todd Lewis?
Yes.
Seventeen.
Next, we have the approval of the solid waste for the two twenty-one, twenty-two. Sir, I think you...
That is also no change, just hold that.
Okay, yes, that also was...
But not ten minutes, or...
Johnny Garner?
Yes.
Jerry Low?
Yes.
Larry Blackstock?
Yes.
Al McKinnon?
Yes.
Andrea Hollis?
Yes.
Jackie Butler?
Yes.
Joseph, I'm sorry, Anne Moore?
Yes.
Jerry Higgins?
Yes.
Russell Flay?
Yes.
Jerry Emerson?
Yes.
Sandra Hyers?
Yes.
Joseph Valero?
Yes.
Barry Smith?
Yes.
Tim Pro?
Yes.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Mike Alexander?
Yes.
Todd Lewis?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, we have the approval of the highway budget for 2021, 2022, at zero point zero two zero zero. Also no change. Motion to approve by Commissioner Al McKinnon, and a second by Commissioner Larry Blackstock. Any discussion? If not, let's...
Johnny Garner?
Yes.
Jerry Low?
Yes.
Larry Blackstock?
Yes.
Al McKinnon?
Yes.
Andrea Hollis?
Yes.
Jackie Butler?
Yes.
Anne Moore?
Yes.
Carolyn Higgins?
Yes.
Russell Flay?
Yes.
Jerry Emerson?
Yes.
Sandra Hyers?
Yes.
Joseph Valero?
Yes.
Barry Smith?
Yes.
Tim Pro?
Yes.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Mike Alexander?
Yes.
Todd Lewis?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, we have the approval of the County General Budget for 2021, 2022, at one point seven zero two zero. Is that any change? There is no change, there's a sentence in the page. I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'd like to know if the...
We have a motion by Mr. Jerry Emerson, John Garner, and... Any discussion on the County General Budget? If not, roll call.
Johnny Garner?
Yes.
Jerry Low?
Yes.
Larry Blackstock?
Yes.
Al McKinnon?
Yes.
Andrea Hollis?
Yes.
Jackie Butler?
Yes.
Anne Moore?
Yes.
Carolyn Higgins?
Yes.
Russell Flay?
Yes.
Barry Smith?
Yes.
Tim Pro?
Yes.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Mike Alexander?
Yes.
Todd Lewis?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, we have the approval of the lottery budget for 2021, 2022.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Tim Pro?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Commissioner Mike Alexander. Would there be any discussion on the lottery budget?
Johnny Garner?
Yes.
Jerry Low?
Yes.
Larry Blackstock?
Yes.
Al McKinnon?
Yes.
Jackie Butler?
Yes.
Anne Moore?
Yes.
Carolyn Higgins?
Yes.
Russell Flay?
Yes.
Jerry Emerson?
Yes.
Sandra Hyers?
Yes.
Joseph Valero?
Yes.
Barry Smith?
Yes.
Tim Pro?
Yes.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Mike Alexander?
Yes.
Todd Lewis?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, we have the approval of the solid waste for the two twenty-one, twenty-two.
I'd like to motion to approve the budget.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Jerry Emerson, and a second by Ms. Carolyn Higgins.
Johnny Garner?
Yes.
Jerry Low?
Yes.
Larry Blackstock?
Yes.
Al McKinnon?
Yes.
Andrea Hollis?
Yes.
Jackie Butler?
Yes.
Anne Moore?
Yes.
Carolyn Higgins?
Yes.
Russell Flay?
Yes.
Jerry Emerson?
Yes.
Sandra Hyers?
Yes.
Joseph Valero?
Yes.
Barry Smith?
Yes.
Tim Pro?
Yes.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Mike Alexander?
Yes.
Todd Lewis?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, we have the approval of the techno- technology school budget for 2021, 2022, at zero point zero two zero zero, which I believe that's unchanged also.
I know it was approved by the chair.
Any discussion on the technology center?
Johnny Garner?
Yes.
Jerry Low?
Yes.
Larry Blackstock?
Yes.
Al McKinnon?
Yes.
Andrea Hollis?
Yes.
Jackie Butler?
Yes.
Anne Moore?
Yes.
Carolyn Higgins?
Yes.
Russell Flay?
Yes.
Jerry Emerson?
Yes.
Sandra Hyers?
Yes.
Joseph Valero?
Yes.
Barry Smith?
Yes.
Tim Pro?
Yes.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Mike Alexander?
Yes.
Todd Lewis?
Yes.
Next, we have the approval of the drug fund for 2021, 2022.
Motion to approve.
I'll second Andrea Hollis.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Tim Pro, and a second by Commissioner Andrea Hollis. Any discussion on the drug fund?
Johnny Garner?
Yes.
Jerry Low?
Yes.
Larry Blackstock?
Yes.
Al McKinnon?
Yes.
Andrea Hollis?
Yes.
Jackie Butler?
Yes.
Anne Moore?
Yes.
Carolyn Higgins?
Yes.
Russell Flay?
Yes.
Jerry Emerson?
Yes.
Sandra Hyers?
Yes.
Joseph Valero?
Yes.
Barry Smith?
Yes.
Tim Pro?
Yes.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Mike Alexander?
Yes.
Todd Lewis?
Yes.
Next, we have the approval of the general debt service budget and all of the budgets. I have a motion by Mr. Mike Alexander?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Todd Lewis. Any question?
Johnny Garner?
Yes.
Jerry Low?
Yes.
Larry Blackstock?
Yes.
Al McKinnon?
Yes.
Andrea Hollis?
Yes.
Jackie Butler?
Yes.
Anne Moore?
Yes.
Carolyn Higgins?
Yes.
Russell Flay?
Yes.
Jerry Emerson?
Yes.
Sandra Hyers?
Yes.
Joseph Valero?
Yes.
Barry Smith?
Yes.
Tim Pro?
Yes.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Mike Alexander?
Yes.
Todd Lewis?
Yes.
Next, we have the resolution for making the appropriations for various counties, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Chester County.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I received an email from the Tax Assistant requesting another ninety-nine hundred dollars to add to our budget. Is this one of our plans? We have made our budget for fifty-nine hundred, but it's a nation of...
Next, we have the resolution for making the appropriations for various counties, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Chester County.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I received an email from the Tax Assistant requesting another ninety-nine hundred dollars to add to our budget. Is this one of our plans? We have made our budget for fifty-nine hundred, but it's a nation of... This is the property assessment budget. That would have included in our budget, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Here's the budget.
Yes.
This is to approve the various ones that, that's especially here, and only for them to meet.
I'd like to make, give her the ninety-nine hundred dollars to make her... This is what, this is non-recurring, is that right? Three, one year. And that's not reoccurring, but it's, it's, it's not reoccurring, it's not reoccurring.
I believe it would be good to vote on these here, and then vote on the amendment to add that to property assessment budget, as one time occurring.
What, what's the, we had discussion last Tuesday, so I've asked if we get a legal opinion for review. Can we change it tonight, or would have to wait, or have to be a budget, budget amendment after July? Because a little of the control office, obviously requiring that is different this time, they are requiring that budgets for municipalities and counties must be approved prior to July one. Members of the past have always done a continuing budget, and we can go back and ask the past set after July one. So the question I had was, can we change anything tonight, or would have to be a budget? I don't know what the control office would say, but I think for the commission, it's, and, uh, explain that.
I have gone before the budget committee with, um, request for... I have two budgets, I have a property assessors office budget, and then I have what's called a reappraisal budget. In the property assessors budget, we have line items for things like printing and, um, office equipment, office supplies. The usual type of line items that change out of an office budget. And in that budget, I can ask for additional ten thousand four hundred dollars, most of which was non-recurring.
And that was approved?
That was approved, yes, all of that was approved. Uh, it was for a new copier for our office, it was for additional costs for printing, the reappraisal notices that will be mailed next year, and then there was a ten percent increase in our back processing, um, simply for inflation. Our vendors had increased that. So the ten thousand four hundred that I presented to the budget committee was approved. Um, there was a misunderstanding, I guess, because we also have what's called a reappraisal budget. Once upon a time, the state, um, reimbursed us for any costs that were associated with the reappraisal. Probably ten years ago, the state stopped reimbursing us for that, we must continue funding the reappraisal. Two thousand and twenty-two will be the reappraisal for the county. And so I am asking that budget, that we have additional money for, um, a person, should we need a person to come back, to come in as contract labor. Yeah, two thousand and sixteen, we had someone from the state who was retired, the county just helped out with our reappraisal, with pricing the land, pricing homes. And then the state acquires, um, that we go out and revisit properties, that we have questions about the value of those properties. So I also asked that we have some money added to the travel line item, to that reappraisal budget. And the total of that increase was ninety-five hundred dollars, a total of ninety-five hundred. And the nineteen-hundred of it was in case we contracted and needed a person to help with the reappraisal, the remainder was travel. Um, we discussed in the budget committee if it was going to be reoccurring or non-recurring, and I think I made a statement, if you want to leave it in my budget, you can leave it in my budget basically. If, I'm asking for it to be non-recurring, it's money that will be used for the reappraisal. And we may not need it for the reappraisal, it will depend on whether or not we have a contract labor that comes in and helps out to reappraise. So the additional amount that was not approved by the budget committee was ninety-five hundred dollars. Um, and I found out that it had not been in the budget, the budget committee had already proposed, it's sessioned this year. And I discussed with Tion, and Tion said, the only way that I can get approval for this would be to come to the full commission and ask that that money be added to my budget. Um, so that's on here. I'm just asking that the additional ninety-five hundred dollars we added to the budget for reappraisal.
Yeah, I, I should, the reason on the budget, budget committee standpoint, is, I did tell her that, that any, anything that the budget committee does is a recommendation, and that this whole commission can do what they, what they choose to do. I guess where she and I differ, we had this discussed, but now, is, I did interpret that as a misunderstanding. I thought that our question answer was, was pretty clear, so I, you categorize it as a misunderstanding, I would categorize it as a miscommunication. But, uh, we was thinking that this, the way you talked, that this was going to be recurring expense every year. So that's, that's what the budget committee decided not to do. And I took, I'm going to pull up my standpoint, I'll put it on there in just a minute, so I'm going to pull this closer. And number two is, is the reason the travel was, the increase of travel was, was caused was some discussion about possibly changing the per deal rate for the whole county, because it hadn't been looked at in several years, forty-seven cents now, it gets a look into it fifty-five cents. And there also gets some discussion about maybe the county buying a car or something for county employees to use, which are big to use too. So that's the reason that decision was not made, that out of here, because it was something that was going to come back and look at the entire submission, about possibly increasing the per deal mileage, or buying a car. So that was something that just was directed at you, something that was going to look at the entire county. It's on the, on the, let me tell you my standpoint on the eight hundred dollars. The night that the budget committee voted on this, I did not vote on that. I did not vote on that, for the same reason these group people voted tonight, that they had come up with it. I was of the understanding, and any other people on the budget committee can speak up, they were of the understanding that you were going to continue to utilize the two people that work for you now and pay them a career's fee for more hours. The way the police department has designed, they work correctly under my supervision, I don't blame them, does their scheduling. So I felt that it was a conflict for me to say, I would allow them more hours for a few, whatever my responsibility, my duties of the city manager's police department, not the session office, so I abstained from that vote, and I did not vote on it. So that's, that's where we're at tonight. I just want to get full disclosure, that's kind of how, how that happened. The one that's 37717. She is right, I did tell her that this commission wouldn't have to take it up. I just wanted a legal opinion from you, since we are having to do a little bit of their petition here, we're kind of the Controller's office. As I know, we're passing, we passed a continuing budget resolution, then we can, then we have time to make changes. Because I had said the budget committee had to go back in session after tonight. We don't have the budget this year, so we've either got to, whatever we do on the budget, we've got to approve it tonight, or do a budget amendment in July. But that's where we're at on, on purpose.
How would you ask, are you asking for money for someone you might admire? Yes, Commissioner Hyers. It would be for someone that we're contracting with them to just help with the reappraisal. It's not a new employee in my office. It would be just someone we contracted to come in and help with the reappraisal. Now, we talked about the two people that I currently have as part-time employees that go out into the county to do all the reviewing of properties of the county and measure and list all the new construction. I think Tim and I talked about it in that meeting, that's where he said he had commented, would I be using those two people? If those two people have the extra time to come in and work with that contracted labor to help with the reappraisal, then yes, I could utilize them, but I'm not saying I'm going to use them. It would just be if they have the time and the desire to come in and help with the reappraisal. In 2016, I contracted with a retired state deputy who came in just part-time and just worked a few hours a week to help us out with the reappraisal. So whether we utilize the two people that we already have, or we bring in someone new, that will just depend on what my part-time employees want to do. But there's no guarantee that we can use them. We may be able to do sharing, and I may be able to handle the reappraisal ourselves this year. That's what we could. So if that money is not used, then we call that on the list.
But now, wasn't part of that $9,000 thing a raise for those good people working?
No. For this year, it's reappraisal, it is to fund reappraisal.
Okay, cause on that list, you give it a raise for those on the list that I got.
This is what I think I presented to the budget committee, and I said payroll will need to be increased for additional personnel to help with reappraisal.
And what was that?
It was the $8,800.
Yeah.
Right. But that's how I addressed it, was payroll will need to be increased for additional personnel to help with reappraisal. It was not a raise for the current employees. It could be additional hours for those employees, should they decide to come in and contract to help with the reappraisal.
Okay, what I, what I think would be the best to do is, we need to give a motion and a second and vote on the amendment of what the budget committee referred us here on the sheet, and then next we'll add, uh, vote on adding the $9,500 to the property assessors office. But first, we'd like to go ahead and give a motion and a second for the, uh, the way they're listed here on the appropriations for various county sheets that we have. And then, that next, vote on the additional to the budget of the property assessors office. Could I get a motion and a second for the appropriations?
Will you already have that motion?
Do we have a motion? No, I don't, no we haven't.
No. It's listed here. I'll make a motion when you accept those.
We have, we have our own issue?
I'll say. I'll say.
We have a motion by Commissioner Joe Malero and a second by Commissioner Mike Alexander. We're going to call on for the appropriations as the district here on the sheet.
Johnny Garner.
Yes.
Jerry Lovell.
Yes.
Larry Blacktop.
No.
Al McInnes.
No.
Andrea Hollis.
Yes.
Becky Butler.
Yes.
Anne Moore.
Yes.
Carolyn Higgins.
Yes.
Russell Clayton.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyers.
Yes.
Joseph Malero.
Yes.
Mary Smith.
Yes.
Tim Crowe.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Mike Alexander.
Yes.
Todd Lewis.
Yes.
Good night, Thursday.
Now, in addition to the resolution, we need a motion and a second to add the additional possible expense to the property assessors office budget.
I'll make a call.
We have a motion by Commissioner.
I was right down with Ken.
And a second by Commissioner Jerry Emerson. An additional money can be rolled off.
About $9,500.
$9,500.
Johnny Garner.
Yes.
Jerry Lovell.
Yes.
Larry Blacktop.
No.
Al McInnes.
Yes.
Andrea Hollis.
No.
Becky Butler.
Yes.
Anne Moore.
Yes.
Carolyn Higgins.
No.
Russell Clayton.
No.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyers.
Yes.
Joseph Malero.
Yes.
Mary Smith.
Yes.
Tim Crowe.
I was saying, I passed for the same reason I did that with me.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Mike Alexander.
Yes.
John Clayton. I'm sorry. Todd Lewis.
Yes.
All right. 13 calls.
Next on the agenda, we have the fiscal strength and efficient government fiscal confirmation letter for our three-star program requirements. This is something we do each year for the three-star program of the state.
I make a motion to approve the resolution after this end.
You have a motion to approve the appropriations?
I'll say.
Commissioner Tim Crowe and a second by Commissioner Johnny Garner. All in favor of the say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have the Shallow Regional Solid Waste Department 10-year plan. This is a plan that the Solid Waste has to do and send off to the state to get approved. We already have the approved draft back from the state, and they know it's a grant. So we need to, is everyone seeing this draft? I know it's a hundred pages, but we need to, first of all, uh, in a second.
I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve of Mr. Larry Blacktop and a second by Ms. Andrea Hollis. Is there any discussion about this 10-year plan?
I would say it's a good job, most of the understanding is to get back in time too. For a hundred page document, to give it to this, it got to sit back wherever it needs to be, I think. I think y'all should make a move, yeah.
All in place of the plans, start to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, on the agenda, we're considering the purchase of Regent's Light Building for $780,000, if this commission approves. Our plan would be to purchase this building with the American Rescue Fund and not any county funds. So, continuing on about the Regent's building, I'd like to entertain a motion to continue on.
I make a motion.
I have a motion. Need a second to do a little discussion. To continue on with the considering the purchase of the Regent's.
I make a motion. Yeah, it's, sure.
You have a motion?
Aye.
You have a motion. We have a second by Mr. Larry Blacktop. Would there be any discussion on this Regent's building?
I will. How many offices are going out there to build?
No offices or anything has been discussed yet. Now, it had been referred that it would be a great, because of the drive-through services and the door, to have a person from the office of the county clerk's office and possibly the trustee's office to make it convenient to the, our, our county taxpayers and for the reasons they need to purchase a tag, their souvenir, or whatever, if they can be able to go in to the drive-through and not have to make personal contact or go inside the building just for safety reasons. But, and also, it has been mentioned about it would be a great place for the veterans' office because it's easier to access in the veterans' office now, either at both the long rail or the staff. But it hasn't been said on what offices we're looking at yet.
Well, that's been settled on one office, and you know you need to.
Well, we need it for the social distancing and it is, that's what this American Rescue Plan is. It is for the prevention of any other spread of COVID or any other pandemic that might come about. Because the reason we had to, right now, we had to do a lot of amending to our offices and buildings because people are close together and customers come in and contact, we had big old spit yards and all kinds of stuff. This already has bulletproof glass, and it also has a vault in it that they use for running people out.
This coffin is practically open, if these people that didn't take a shot, go ahead and take a shot, take a shot.
Nonetheless. Well, this is a rescue plan that's for the future. They don't need that like super crazy, you could be tested in our county, and we want to help them with anything that was coming up. This money is a base account for the use of that, to help protect people.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I feel like we have not really gone about this a lot. No committee, all range planning committee has not looked at its funds and has not looked at what the possible ways to spend this money would be. I don't think there's any real rush to grab this building, I don't think anybody else is going to buy it immediately. We need to sit, either our long range planning committee, or government affairs committee, whoever we need, to look at all the various options. We have different buildings here in town, and we see a way for the cost to fix up. We have different ways, we need to look at this, other than make a decision on that building without talking about while the other. No committee has voted. This needs to go to the committee and come out of committee before we make a final decision.
Here you have your check, and just why this money can be spent. The light we're getting up, that is everybody that, uh, nothing, you can't, can't even find out at this time, uh, the lights checked, it had the control itself. They told us in a meeting that we went to, that if the narrative is driven correctly, the drive-through and the distancing would be, the COVID money would be approved. Purchase that building with solely any renovations that have been done. Power that's changing every day, uh, we're just making out weight, we have no balance except that though is what they can use the money for. But they have not exactly come out of the list to begin to use the money for. So, uh, that's kind of what we're at. But they approve this. The comptroller, uh, when we went to the meeting like a couple of weeks ago on the leasing, told, uh, plans as for, to ask for a plan when this building be suitable to be paid for near the, with COVID's plans. Comptroller, yes, related back there, the back and drive-through, we know, both, no money back and social distancing as far as the, the rent of the building. So not the county money, no county, just COVID money, just COVID spent on this building, isn't it?
Yes, I'd like to express that, uh, this building wouldn't even be considered if it would be any cost to our taxpayers. But they're willing now, and, uh, Mr. Martin, he said that we could add that into a contract, uh, that could be negotiated, that it is dependent upon the COVID funds, uh, helping the county in purchasing the building. But we have to pursue to this point to get the consideration.
But it's not entirely true, because you will be having recurring expenses, the fact that you won't be getting taxes generated by that building for $1,000 a year, city and county.
Yes, they, they, they.
And you also, the council or office suggests highly about avoiding recurring expenses. As far as, I know, we pay bills for electricity, water, sewer, everything, every month, that's recurring. And that taxes, revenue and cost is going to be every year. And that's prime location for commercial that we can, we can add asset up. You know, I, I would imagine several people in here recall when we had this debate about the city building, when the city went through deciding where to locate city offices. If you recall, there was quite a lot of a little about moving, when anybody talked about moving offices outside of downtown. I imagine quite a few people in here that remember that, but there are people on this board that know that. You see that that's why the city building was built right in this border. And so, as far as the convenience thing, people come downtown and do their business, whether they want to get in their car drive a mile away to do some other business. That means, as far as convenience goes, if you're really not being convenient, we could spend tens of thousands of dollars on new software so people could sit down and click their mouse places, pay drugs, and that would be much more physically responsible to the taxpayer. I understand we got this money and it's thought it's a great possibility for us to spend it, but again, we were told, we would discuss this, as Barry mentioned, in a, in a whole group. And I think we have to be very cautious, especially after deals of a several hundred thousand dollar unit fee that we levy against the citizens of the county, I believe we can, um, well, we're allowed to discuss this much more in depth and consider the true convenience of it as opposed to just a few, now, counting that, that was just about over. I think we very frankly will, well, we can do more than that.
I want to ask something. If we don't use that money, do we have to send it back? Judy, oh, yes, could we ask the others? Right, to some other county, yes.
Yes, sir. Miss Dallas, 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 I would relax and say.
Well, those things to some other county.
How long do we have?
Excuse me, Mr. and Mr. Becky Butler, he has called.
I think we haven't looked at all the options. And that building out there would take all the tax, which everybody knows, and everyone that I've talked to in my district, I haven't talked to anyone that's bought a house in that building.
tiny building. Maybe other options, we might build a new building on some of the places we have to suit the purpose that we need to hold in that building out there. And, uh, so like I said, everybody I've talked to is against buying this building. So I think we need to look at other options. And we got time to do that. Well, we, we have, or 2024, use these funds.
That's also.
And we could use it for other things that we need to, got a list of something we can use for.
Yes, we have.
Or make rope and water or whatever. We need to. So. I just think we need to take our time and look at.
No better.
Thank you.
No, sir. Would there be any more discussion?
No.
Raise your hand, Commissioner.
Well, what, what exactly is the motion?
All right. The motion is to continue on with, I, all you're doing, uh, during the contract.
This is not a motion.
No, this is not a, this is a motion to let Mr. Martin, Mr. Martin, would you like to speak, uh, and tell what, what we're doing to do? We're going to get any conditions on our purchase.
If we're doing a contract, it's like we're, we're, we're living in a battle.
In particular, that's also true. The commission could vote to purchase the building, authorize the layers to negotiate the contract and execute it. You could vote not to do that, vote to do that. Out of its own agenda, the commission considers five, whatever you want to do.
Yes.
And, and I will be honest with you, I, I will probably make a lot of people in this room mad at what I'm about to say, but I'm sorry. I have a very open mind about the purchase of this building. To the point that I might pull the trigger. I think now we need to slow down. I would feel much better about taking a break, taking a break from this and just look whole heartedly make sure we're doing the right thing. Because I too have been put hard with calls and texts and emails. And I have turned it up here to the citizens of my district before because I thought what we're doing was right. I'm not falling on my soul from that. I would feel much better if we take it this and look a little bigger on our options as far as buildings and expansion. I get, we need more. I get that. But I just think to make sure, and for anybody that made bad in this room, I apologize. I'm not going to lose any sleep on that. I'm doing what I think is best. I, I just think we need to slow down.
I would, I, I think what we can entertain, if any would like to, uh, Commissioner, if you want to.
You know, it's also discussed in budget meeting that if, if we did buy this building and let people move, that the current building mayor and the action center trustees in would be often for sale, probably would leave that space in there. Would have that there pretty hard to defend it to this and that building without, with that just still is, we don't know if it'll be able to get, so that's, you know, that's just something we got.
And, and just for informational purposes, this in, you think, but if we check the utility cost on the building over here is a building that's where we're in and the building at Regent's building and the utility cost and bills of the Regent's building per year is about $8,000 less in, in our bill for the utilities.
Is that a lot of power?
If you back on the year only, please.
But again, there's still many, you know, these buildings are still paying, you know, these are the taxpayers that are still paying that.
Yes. What I get to, we have a motion.
It's a very important motion. Nobody has actually stated the motion, so I'm in the whole of that area.
The original motion was to continue on with the considering of the purchase of the Regent's building.
I make.
All right. Motion to continue on with the considerations of purchasing building?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Yeah. Yeah, all right.
Okay. Can we just do a roll call?
Johnny Garner?
All right. What was yes, that call?
Yes, that's what I said. Continue on with the purchase process on the Regent's building.
No, that call.
And they're not continuing on with purchase?
No.
Jerry Low?
No.
Larry Blacktop?
Yes.
Al Kinnon?
No.
Andrea Hollen?
Yes.
Jackie Butler?
No.
Anne Moore?
Yes.
Carolyn Diggs?
Yes.
Russell Plank?
Yes.
Jerry Emerson?
Yes.
Sandra Hires?
Yes.
Joseph Malera?
No.
Barry Smith?
No.
Tim Pro?
No.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Mike Alexander?
Yes.
Todd Lewis?
No.
Nine percent, I think, buddy. Nine, this was Jordan. So, question carries.
We will all proceed, but then this does mean that we will purchase it if it's going on in consideration.
A lot of people are wondering how would that, um, how would the building be, um, electricity, all the, keep that running? There's other things that we could pay for. We could also, we have two months in the back year, then we have this month that we're probably paying for that. Just a second.
We just had a vote on the consideration of continuing the process of our lawyer negotiating with them. But the only consideration he is putting in there, the stipulation that we will not purchase the building if it cannot be purchased with COVID funds. We don't want it to be to any taxpayer, we don't want any taxpayer to be having a building for this building on our county funds. That, we want that put in, you know, consideration and he will negotiate.
Just, we're not going to be voting again?
Yes, sir.
If you decide to come and purchase it, we'll, we'll have to come back to them and make you vote again, is that correct?
Yes, it's correct, yes.
Which, will it go through the committee?
We can't. They have to.
We'd be longer, we'd be longer in the committee. We'd be longer in the committee.